No.
Oh, yeah. Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the Albany City Council meeting on Wednesday, October 12th. One voice, please. Wednesday, October 12th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to the order and then do the pleasurable reasons. Please join us.
The flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, which stands in one nation, one nation, and indivisible, the free and equal exercise of our
Hello. Like a roll call, please. Where is our people? Was there Peter? Are we missing our city clerk?
She went, she, she went to go make a copy of something real quick. So I don't, yeah. Here she comes.
I was going to try to do the roll call myself.
But you forgot our names.
We have visual cues.
Right.
Yes, we do. He'll make an entrance. Yeah, we have a form. Yeah. Here it comes.
Hi, Allison. Can I roll call, please?
Counselor Smith, present. Counselor Olson.
Here.
Counselor Novak.
Here.
Counselor Bartholomew.
Here.
Counselor Kupczynski. Counselor Johnson. Mayor Johnson II.
Here. So thank you for coming tonight and joining us in the City Council meeting. Tonight, we have a special presentation, Benton County Justice System Improvement Program, JSIP, otherwise known. I'd like to welcome Commissioners Zan Ogierro and Sheriff Van Orsdale from Benton County. The other floor.
Good evening. I am a little bit new to this. I need to share my screen. And sheriff is laughing because he's glad he's not the one that's running the technology.
You use the microphone. Ma'am.
She heard you.
Thank you.
Go ahead and pull it a little closer.
Okay, good evening. I apologize that I wasn't speaking directly into the mic previously. I was just apologizing about my technology skills. I am presenting alongside the sheriff tonight and my colleague Damian Sands, who's our Behavioral Health Director, about the Justice System Improvement Program in Benton County. We've come to you because, of course, North Albany is part of Benton County, and we have a lot of common issues and shared issues when it comes to law enforcement and behavioral health. I've been involved in shaping our Justice System Improvement Program since I took office in 2017. When I first ran for office, the issues that were top of mind for our voters in Benton County were behavioral health writ large. Then, when I ran again, both homelessness and housing needs and community safety joined that list of top issues. Our Justice System vision balances treatment with accountability. We aspire to be an effective, equitable, and safe system where the outcomes are healthy and stable individuals and improved community safety overall. The planning system began, as I mentioned, in 2018 with an in-depth assessment of the entire system from first contact with law enforcement through the courts and back to return to the community for an individual that had been in custody. We formed a couple of advisory committees, technical and community advisory committees, and held lots of different community engagement events, more than 30 over the, to date. And we've made some really big decisions as a Board of Commissioners so far. One of those is that we are going to be funding the courthouse and district attorney's office through direct borrowing rather than through a bond measure. And we also have decided, we have funds to fully fund Crisis Center, which will be in downtown Corvallis to meet crisis mental health needs of members of the community. Our efforts are data-based and aligned with best practices from comparator communities around Oregon and around the country. And we are really excited to present today this suite of facilities that we're proposing that will expand mental health resources, restore accountability for offenders, and improve emergency response and community safety. So with the assessment in hand, we began an iterative process of implementation. We began in 2021 with our local option levy for community safety and public health, and then the next step will be the planned bond measure in May of 2023. The local option levy funds programs, including some of the new services that are listed on this slide, our enhanced crisis response in collaboration with the City of Corvallis Police Department, the pre-trial services program, more crisis response intervention training, and much of that is also done jointly with the Albany Police Department and Chief Harndon as well. So we are also expanding the structures, facilities, as I mentioned. The Crisis Center planning is already underway. We have a site. We are getting ready to demolish the existing building and move forward. The bond measure would provide funding for a new correctional facility, the sheriff's office and emergency operations center, and they would all be co-located on the Community Safety and Justice Campus. So with that brief overview, I'm going to pass it off to my colleague Damian Sands, who is with us virtually. So Damian?
Hi, this is Damian. My apologies, everyone. I'm having a few technical difficulties. So I'm hoping Commissioner with your help if you could, yes, there you go, if you could scroll through for me. So I don't want to be one of those ones who's going to read the slides, but I think just for the sake of brevity and for getting through this, I will just sort of read through the slides and then I think at the end of the presentation, if there are questions, we can sort of dig deeper into it. So basically, obviously, the Crisis Center is a treatment center facility providing stabilization for youth and adults experiencing a mental health crisis. Crisis may be an alternative to, the Crisis Center may be an alternative to incarceration or the emergency room. This is a critical component of a continuum of care within our behavioral health system. So the design process is underway and includes architects who are working with a community-based design committee, including the Health Department staff and stakeholder partner organizations. I will say, as an aside for that, they have, so far, this process has been great, and they have really tried to be inclusive of kind of the whole spectrum of individuals we might sort of see come through the front door. Next slide, please. Thank you. The overall goals of the Crisis Center are going to be focused on crisis and risk assessments, short-term therapy, quiet, peaceful respite, restful, respite, just to be clarified, respite and the Crisis Center are going to be co-located. Obviously, one interfaces with the other one, but obviously they're separate programming. So quiet, peaceful respite, referrals for ongoing treatment and community resources, safe and supportive break from stresses, and skills training. Next slide, please.
We move on to the sheriff.
Okay.
So as you can see by this slide, our county averages eight to nine thousand crimes a year. In the year 2020, nearly nine thousand offenses were reported. And not surprisingly, in two 2022 Benton County surveys, crime was one of the highest priority issues identified. Excellent. Failure to appear rates in Benton County are through the roof. The trend in Benton County is a growing concern. Failed to appear, FTA, is up 132% since 2014, and has grown for six consecutive years. And to put that in perspective, the national average is five. So if you look at the chart there, you'll see that we're well above the national average. We have a critical lack of accountability in Benton County, and this is mostly due to we use cite in lieu of custody frequently. And what that means is, when I started with Corvallis Police Department in 1997, I was trained to issue citations versus taking people to jail. If I took somebody to jail, we ran the risk of shutting down the facility. And then subsequently, when I started training officers, I trained them to do the same thing, issue citations versus taking people to jail. I hear it frequently on the radio now, our deputies and our officers in Benton County issue citations versus taking people to jail for fear of still shutting down the facility.
So Sheriff, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
What's the 2021 number?
So I don't know the 2021 number. I can tell you, in July of 2021, we implemented a pre-trial release program with Sergeant Keith Hunnemiller from the jail, and we've hovered right around 18 to 20% with him in this, in this kind of a pilot program, doing follow-up with every person that gets a court date, whether it's through citation in the field or a court date through the courts. He calls and checks in and reminds people, almost 500 people monthly, that they have court the next day or the day of or two days out to try and drop that failed to appear rate. It works for a lot of folks, but of course, some folks that realize that there's really no consequence, they continue to fail to appear.
Okay. Thank you.
Excellent. As you can see on this slide, rather than sending our adults in custody to another jail outside of the area, we need a therapeutic trauma-informed facility to be most effective. Again, our jail was built in 1976, so it's built to 1976 standards. The best practices is to keep the family in your support system nearby. As you can see here, I rent 22 beds in Norcore, which is in the Dalles. And so we make two trips a week to the Norcore facility to transport adults in custody who are either being sentenced to the courts or have been given time for post-prison supervision violations. And that takes them away from their support system, whether it be family, friends, Benton County Behavioral Health, whatever that support is. Now, they're several counties away and several hours away. And best practice is, of course, to keep them here so they have access to those. You'll also see on this slide, I rent beds from Polk County. I rent 10 beds in Polk County, and we keep 10 adults in custody in Polk County at all times. So that's 32 beds I'm renting outside of Benton County in my 40-bed facility. The other thing to keep in mind with the 40-bed facility, I have two holding cells and two waiting cells. Benton County is roughly 100,000 people. If I get four people in my facility that are under the influence of drugs or alcohol or suffering from some sort of behavioral mental health or substance use, addiction problem, that shuts my facility down because I can't put them behind the gate until they are no longer under the influence of those controlled substances or intoxicants or have had an opportunity to be evaluated by behavioral health. So if I have four people out of 100,000 in my facility, it shuts down.
One of the questions that we commonly receive about this project, and as a result of our presentation, is how are we going to fund all of this? Well, we've been working really hard as a Board of Commissioners and with our staff on fundraising, and we've brought in quite a bit of money from both the state and federal government to help with the project. The courthouse and DA's office, as I mentioned, will be funded through county direct borrowing. That's 20% of the project. And we have 15% of the total cost coming in through courthouse, state courthouse matching funds. So that will bring in about $25 million. Then lastly, we have some federal funds coming in, both for the Emergency Operations Center and for the Crisis Center. So we're looking at funding about 60% of the overall project through a bond measure in May of 2023, and we're looking to fund up to $100 million through that bond.
In January of 2022, we finalized the selection of the new Community Safety and Justice Campus, which is located, located one mile north of downtown Corvallis, next to the Hewlett Eckard campus off of Highway 20. The campus is envisioned to co-locate community safety and justice facilities to include the new courthouse, new district attorney's office, a new correctional facility, new sheriff's office, and a new emergency operations center. And then access for this facility will be off of Highway 20, as you can see on the map there. And the proposed correctional facility building will be one-story. It'll have higher ceilings in the housing area for the AICs. And the concept plan, if you look on the back, shows for added capacity in the future if we need to add on to the facility at another time. Next month, next week, sorry, next month, next week, we'll be hosting a forum, presenting this in a larger manner with a larger panel and presenters. It'll be at Linus Pauling on the 6th, I'm sorry, on the 19th at 6. And I encourage everybody who can to participate, either in person or virtually. Commissioner Ogierro has some cards here that we can leave with you to hand out so folks can see. But I encourage everybody to participate in the process and make sure they have a real clear understanding. I'm always available if you have any questions. Don't hesitate to reach out to myself or any of the Commissioners as well. And that kind of concludes our presentation. Do you have any questions?
Counsel, any questions? Counselor Novak?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to try to attend that meeting virtually, but in the event that I can't, my, one of my chief questions is, you mentioned restored accountability for offenders. Can you address that at all briefly?
Certainly. So in our current facility, because of the size and the constraints of the facility, we're just unable to provide any type of classes. So we have some iPads that we provide to our adults in custody that has some classes that they can take on the internet. But as far as group classes or privacy, a place where they could meet with a behavioral health or substance abuse counselor, anything like that, we just don't, we can't provide those type of locations within the facility to get the ball rolling so they have an opportunity to come back into our community and be successful members.
So it's classes that are to...
I think that the counselor's question was not about the treatment side, but the accountability side. And basically, we want to be able to hold people rather than releasing them too early. And the sheriff can elaborate on that.
Yeah, I apologize. I misunderstood. Yes, currently, with the failed to appears as high as they are and the facility being as small as it is, most folks are given court dates. And so the habitual offenders know there's really no consequence for their actions. And so if you look to our neighbors like Lynn County, where there's 230-plus beds, and we have 40. And if I get those two holding cells and two waiting cells occupied, I can be closed at 20 occupants. And so we don't even get near that 40. And in a county of 100,000, and then bad guys knowing that there's no consequence for their actions, it makes it challenging at times.
So the expansion?
Correct.
Chiefly, how we're going to hold?
Well, that and with the passage of Senate Bill 48, and now there's three categories of crimes, and failed to appear falls into that third category, which is a mandatory hold. So now, instead of giving people citations in the, in the field for that failed to appear, they can be taken to the facility and held accountable until they get to see a judge.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other council members have any questions?
Can I have a final follow-up question with regard to this? Assuming everything goes through, what are we looking at? For how long will this take to even build and be able to use? Because are we a few years out?
We are, unfortunately. If the bond measure passes in May, I think we would start construction hopefully in 2025 and be ready to go in 2026, 2027. It's a slow process when you build these big new facilities from scratch. But believe me, you, we feel the urgency, and the sheriff even more so.
And so, so Ross Police Department will use part of the facility as well, they'll house people there. And do they have, have a jail in Corvallis?
No, the jail falls to the responsibility of the sheriff.
Okay. But they have nowhere to hold anybody? Do they just bring them to you?
No, they, in the basement of the law enforcement center is an interview room and a holding cell, one each for the police department and the sheriff's office. If we have to hold somebody until the jail opens back up, or if we process a DUI or something like that, that can be done in the basement of the law enforcement center, but there's no long-term facilities.
Okay, thank you.
Presumably, that takes someone off the street as well because they have to have someone over there in the basement of the law enforcement building rather than in the jail or in a patrol car.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Commissioner and Sheriff. We appreciate you coming this evening. Are these slides going to be available to us to look at?
We, we would be happy to share these with you. I'll email them over to your recorder.
I think a city clerk would be the one.
Okay. Super. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good to see both of you. So next to tonight's agenda is a, is a public hearing on the public works SDC fees to accommodate small homes. Directions for how to testify and submit written materials were published in the council agenda. I now declare this public hearing open at 6:19 PM. Bless you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Johnson. I have just a brief presentation tonight. I think there's one slide that I want to go over. But before I get into that, I want to introduce or reintroduce our consultant on this project, Deb Gallardi. Like last time, she is available for any in-depth questions that may arise that I need some help with. I'll take the first crack, but if counsel or members of the public have any, have any questions, we can team up and we can get those questions answered. So. So tonight's public hearing is the last step in a process that we've been at for almost a year. It was in 2021, move this over a little bit. It was in 2021 that counsel asked staff to take a look at our SDCs and see if there was a way to restructure them to possibly reduce the fee for smaller homes, smaller residential development. So staff began that process. We hired Deb. And staff is also concerned, I mean, council is also concerned about making these, any possible fee adjustments or methodology adjustments. Concerned that they are still in accordance with SDC statutes. They want to see what other cities are doing, other municipalities are doing. So, so we undertook that process. We had a series of, I think, four city council work sessions. With the last, most recent session was a public hearing where we adopted the SDC methodology reports, which is the precursor for tonight's public hearing. So. With that, let me bring up, and share my screen. There we go. Make that a little bigger if I can. That's probably the best it's going to get. So the breakdown of the fees are included in the council packet. I don't really want to go over that whole, that whole fee structure again, as we've done that in the past. But I do want to go over some residential development examples, compare that, those examples to our current fee, our proposed fee, and then the difference. So as you, there's, there are three single-family residential examples here, 1,000 square foot home on the small side, 2350 square foot home, which is statistically about our average-sized home, and then a larger home at 3,000 square feet. So our current fees for those homes, remember, our current structure is one fee, one SDC fee, no matter what the size of the residential development. So our current fee has all those homes at the same, same fee. Our proposed fee system would have different fees for those homes, smaller home, of course, having a reduced fee, a larger home having a larger fee. And then the difference is the column to the very right-hand side. So as you can see, we are reducing fees for the small homes. The average-sized home fees are staying about the same, and for larger homes, they're going up. And a couple of other examples, there's a duplex and a quadplex, and you can see the corresponding fees there. And both those are proposed to have reduced fees as well. So. That is all that I have. I would like to entertain any questions that counsel?
Counselor Olson?
Yes. And we have an SDC for street sidewalk, curb, and gutter also. No.
That's, that's part of the transportation SDC. Yes, yes.
Oh, okay. So do we reduce that at all for the small, single-family home?
Yeah. So the transportation SDC fees for smaller homes, the transportation SDC fee would be, would, is proposed to be reduced for smaller homes. And the part of that transportation SDC pays for, pays for the construction of the oversized portion of the street.
Okay. Can you tell me how much the transportation SDC is for the medium-sized, single-family home?
Yeah.
I should know it, but I.
You bet.
Remember it.
So in the council packet on, on page 13, so for the average-sized home, that'd be tier two, and those are homes from 1,000, I'm sorry, that's tier three, tier three. That's homes from 2150 square feet to 3,000 square feet. And that SDC fee is what our current fee is. That's the average. So it's $4,679.
Do we get any, there's a couple areas in my ward where we don't have curbs, we don't have gutters, we don't have sidewalks. Do we get a lot of complaints in those neighborhoods for not having sidewalks, curbs, gutters, and so forth?
I would need to research what kind of complaints that we are receiving. I don't know that answer off the top of my head, but I would, I would suspect that there's probably some, just a baseline number of complaints where we don't have sidewalks and, and curbs and gutters.
It'd be interesting to see if perhaps if we're really looking to reduce the cost of SDCs, maybe finding some way that those could be delayed or maybe even foregone if a small development felt they didn't need sidewalks, curbs, gutters, fancy paving and so forth.
In most instances, curbs and gutters and sidewalks are constructed as part of the street improvement itself. So those areas that are lacking sidewalks and curbs and gutters, those are deficient. And so if it's an existing deficiency, SDCs don't normally go to pay for those improvements. So those are improvements we would have to pay for with existing.
Well, if they were ever, if they were ever put in. Places I'm thinking of haven't had them for decades and seem to be pretty happy neighborhoods.
Yeah.
Just a thought.
Counselor Smith.
What is the biggest category of homes? I know that there are more homes built in a certain range than others. Is that the tier three?
It is, yeah. Tier three is predominantly the size of home that's being built now. So that's why we chose that average-sized home to not really have a reduced fee, trying to incentivize some smaller homes that are more affordable to kind of reduce that fee for those homes.
I remember a comment at an earlier discussion of this about this new methodology and the new fee structure being revenue neutral. There would be lower fees for smaller houses, bigger fees for bigger houses, and it would all wash out to be about the same amount of income that we would get under the old system.
Correct, correct. And that's, you know, time will tell if that happens. Hopefully that this process that we're undertaking will help incentivize the construction of smaller homes because now we don't see a lot of smaller homes being built.
Right.
If they do, if that comes to fruition, then, you know, and if that's predominantly the home that's built, we could see a reduction in revenue. But I don't think that will personally happen. I think this will incentivize some small homes, but we'll see.
Thank you.
Any other counselors? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I will now call those who wish to speak, anyone in the gallery who wishes to speak. Did you want to speak? Oh, he's just waving, okay. Now I'll declare, since no one's wished to speak, I will now declare this public hearing closed at 6:29 PM. Thank you. Council discussion? I, for one, am quite happy about this. As you know, most of you know, I refereed football for 25 years and umpired softball for 12, 13 years in Albany, and I also served several thousand clients nationwide that are seniors that have paid off homes that are looking for smaller places to live. And so I think this is going to incentivize builders to build smaller homes so seniors can age in place, and so they don't have to go into a community or move out of Albany, Oregon. And I will tell you, since the pandemic started, I've had over 40 clients move to other states, and they'd be nice if they can come back home to Albany and their local communities because they're a rich part of our community. And so I'm excited about this change, and I think we'll have some smaller homes being built so those first-time home buyers can buy their first home, or that senior can sell their big paid-off home and use that money for a nest egg to buy a smaller home and stay in Albany. So this is exciting to me. Thank you. So there are three resolutions, counsel, for you to consider in the public hearing. One is revising water SDC, revising water SDC charges, and one is revising wastewater charges, and one is revising transportation system development charges. Is there a motion?
We didn't discuss the wastewater, or is this the time to?
The whole thing we're discussing now, so I was waiting for everybody to say something.
Well, forgive me, I didn't realize we were at that point, and sometimes I say something too soon.
Go ahead.
Yeah, in reviewing this, and I was looking at the chart, specific to restaurants, and they have restaurants in the same category as hospitals and RV parks and funeral services, crematoriums, junior colleges, and tech institutions. And I would submit to you that just as we don't have a one-size-fits-all policy with regard to SDCs and houses, because houses are not all the same size, restaurants are not all the same size, and I really, I take issue with the idea that they're put in the same category as a hospital and some of these huge institutions, especially with regard to the fact that, I know my family's restaurant is not the only one after over two years of lockdown that's not even open five days a week anymore. It just doesn't seem right to me. I don't know if there's anything we can do to, in consideration of this, but I really, really take issue with it, and if there's any way to examine it further, I'd like to do that because I don't think it's right.
Counselor Novak, those are good points that you bring up, and those are points that we can look at in the future. Unfortunately, the what's before you tonight, we focused, for the last year, we focused just on residential.
Okay.
So commercial and industrial SDCs, we did not take a look at how those could be changed or modified.
So that's not on the table, it's merely the homes.
Correct, correct.
Thank you. When I saw those other things on the table, that's the only reason that I felt the need to speak out. So if that's not on the table for tonight, good. Thank you.
That's your question?
Yes, sir.
Perfect, thank you. Any other counselors have anything? Okay. So based for the resolutions are on page four, six, and 12. Do we want to do them individually, or should we go all three at one time? Sean?
I would recommend doing them individually.
Individually?
Yes.
So would a counselor like to make a motion revising water SDC charges?
I would move to adopt the resolution on page four for water SDCs.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much, counsel. The second one is revising water SDC charges on page six. Would a counselor like to make a motion?
I move the council adopt a resolution revising wastewater system development charges, reaffirming an appeal fee and repealing resolution 7106.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would a counselor like to make a, excuse me, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes, thank you. Next, number three, revising transportation system development charges, page 12 of your packet. Would a counselor like to make a motion?
I move council approve a resolution revising transportation system development charges for impacts to the Albany transportation system, reaffirming the appeal fee and repealing resolution number 7107.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes, thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is business from the public. Okay, we have one, two, three, oh, no, one, two, three, four, five. It looks like three are speaking on the same topic. Can we have them pick a spokesman and speak, since they're speaking on the same topic? Thank you. So first up, Stephen Draper, Mr. Draper. Three minutes, please, on the clock.
My name's Stephen Draper, I've been here before. I'd like to know how I can get an ethics investigation. I have enough evidence now to prove that the prior administration had committed several felony crimes and they were covered up by letting people either resign or retire. My dad, this will be the 10th anniversary of his death, he died of a heart attack because of this situation, even though the city council was told that he was in poor health. Myself, I lived in one of the places, and I thought everything was A-OK. Knock on the door, there's a sheriff with Ms. Adams. Time to go, Steve. This was December 14th, 2011, it was 44 degrees. I have a lung issue. They put me out in the street, left me homeless, I had to walk home. That night, I spent the night in the hospital with a lung infection. I want to know how to get an ethics investigation to see why. Merrickan Open, who I've known since first grade, and I thought she was my friend, and maybe she is, maybe she was doing it for the better of Albany, but I'd like to get an ethics investigation to go through all this. My parents lost everything, my mom came in, afford her insulation, my dad's dead, my mom's struggling, and I'm not real happy. I'm a disabled veteran, I served my country, I just need some answers, and if you can tell me how to do that.
Sir, thank you very much for your service. First of all, I'm a veteran myself, and I appreciate you for serving. I'll have to refer you to the city attorney.
Well, Mayor, if he wants to get an ethics violation, then it would be something that would be adverse to the city, so Mr. Draper would need to hire an independent attorney to do that, and we wouldn't be able to give him legal advice, especially since it would be adverse to the city, so.
Oh, there's no problem, it's just, but I can do it if I get myself an attorney.
You can, yeah, you can hire an attorney.
How do I, do I have the attorney come to you and?
They'll tell you. I mean, if you go talk to somebody and they're going to do it, they'll explain it to you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you. Yes, please, go ahead. Wait, save me for him?
This is related to this.
Okay.
Do we have anything similar to a public defender for situations like this?
Well, we have a public defender for criminal stuff, but we don't have a, yeah, that's not a defense. We don't have like a, well, there's legal aid, so he could go to legal aid, Lynn County Legal Aid, and do that, so, yeah. And I can speak, yeah, but you could, we could let him know that he could go to legal aid, and I can speak to some of the merits of it if we ever want to talk about an executive session as well, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Bill Root. Is that Root or Art? Yes, Root.
I know you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Bill Root, R-O-O-T. I live in Albany. And I am a board member of Creating Housing Coalition. We're one of the groups here tonight asking for a portion of the funding that is being provided for helping disabled or unhoused persons. Although this money is not earmarked, it will go a long way to defray some of the costs that we're going to be subjected to in our proposal for building a tiny house community, including in those costs of the system development charges, inspections, and building permits, et cetera. By giving us the finances, it will continue to help accelerate the ability of our group to develop a village, which we have named Hub City Village. We will be in the process of purchasing the property in a very short, timely manner, and we will be hoping to start construction, demolition, and so forth in 2023. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Carol Davies. Ms. Davies, how are you today?
I am great, thank you.
Good seeing you again.
I am speaking in support of providing funding to Creating Housing Coalition, and I am speaking as director of COAT, the Street Outreach Program in Albany. On a daily basis, I see a number of people who would be so appropriate to live in this village. These are people that don't have a hope to be in housing right now due to their low-income status. One of the people that I'm working with is a man, he's 54 years old, he has severe health issues, and he had a career as a physical therapist, and he got sick and lost his house, and he now currently lives in his truck at the I-5 rest area. He has no income, he has been applying for a social security disability for a while, but he is faced with an unknown number of years of living in his vehicle unless some affordable housing is provided for him. Also, working with a younger woman, she's in her 40s, she had a banking career. Again, it's a familiar story, she got sick, ended up losing her job because she was sick, and ended up having her house taken away from her. I met her also at the I-5 rest area. It was one of her first nights out. She was absolutely terrified, she was shaking, she was in her tiny little car, trying her best to put curtains around the windows, she had her little Yorkie with her who was also shaking. These are the people that are being displaced right now because we don't have affordable housing, and these are the people that we would have living in our village. So again, I just wanted to encourage you to vote to support our project. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Next up is Daniel Hutchinson. You're killing me. Thank you. Okay, we'll have you later. Director of Downtown Association, Lisa Grotto.
Good evening, Lisa Grotto, Executive Director of the Albany Downtown Association, with a quick downtown update. Wanted to highlight a few things in our October newsletter. One awesome thing is Downtown Trick or Treat is returning as an in-person event, as you may have known for many years. We will continue to do our online photo contest where kids come and get photographed downtown with, of course, their parents' permission, and then all their friends, relatives, and neighbors can vote for them online. Not to steal anybody's thunder, but I wanted to make sure that people also saw that the chat with the sheriffs, the chiefs and sheriff is Thursday, October 20th, and that's at Margin Coffee Downtown. That was also highlighted in the newsletter. And we're continuing to look for input for our downtown survey that closes this Saturday, which is the October 15th, and people can go to albanydowntown.com/survey. Again, albanydowntown.com/survey, and let us know what we could do to make things even better in our next 40 years, probably only five at the moment. Our newsletter also highlights some downtown restaurants that have wonderful cozy meals for this time of year, including Gambretti's Italian, The Squeaky Cork, which is a Scottish restaurant, and Novak's Hungarian, all with nice tasty meals for this fall weather, which we hope comes soon. We, of course, are always looking for volunteers, including folks to serve on our committees. And a couple of other fun things happening downtown, the Monteith House is offering ghost walks, ghost hunts, and they're also doing the trolley as usual, so check with the Monteith Society on that. And Murder on the Orient Express opens October 28th at Albany Civic Theater. And something we all enjoyed is back, Open Skate in the Street, skating, skateboarding is Sunday, October 16th, so that's. is Sunday, October sixteenth, so that's coming up this weekend. So that was a great event that brought so many different people downtown the last time. Also, in my last couple seconds here, just wanted to let you know that we just returned from the Oregon Main Street Conference, where Albany brought back some awards. Oscar and Tamlin Hunt-Halt of the Natty Dresser earned the Bricks and Mortar Award statewide, which is for the rehabilitation and revitalization of the SE Young Building. And Hannah Darling, our president, was recognized as Volunteer of the Year statewide, and Peggy from Emma Downtown was given a special recognition for all the work that she does in helping our downtown over the last twenty-plus years that she's been involved. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I saw the newspaper article and reached out to you immediately, so congratulations for that.
Thank you.
Would anybody present in the gallery would like to speak from business room to Hearing none, I'll move on. We are going to go over a series of resolutions. I'd like the city manager to talk about this for me, to kind of give us an understanding of what adopting these resolutions and ordinances.
Thank you, Mayor. As Chris Shindel makes his way forward, if he is going to come forward, I'll just tell you that these ordinances are housekeeping changes. So as such, they are interdependent, and they should all be either approved or disapproved, or not approved. And all ordinances will be read tonight for the first time in title only, and after all ordinances have received a first reading, the council will vote on whether to do a second reading of the first ordinance. If any councillor intends to vote against a second reading of any ordinance, they should vote against a second reading of the first one. And if any councillor votes against a second reading of the first ordinance, then all ordinances will be sent to the next council meeting for an automatic second reading and a vote. Is that clear?
It's clear.
Okay.
So, council, do we have for Title Eight, Property Maintenance, Chris Shindel? Is he going to speak to us tonight or no?
He's, he's available for questions, but I think he's, he's pretty much.
He talked to us.
Quite a bit about it, so.
So, council, would anybody like to make a motion?
Can, can we make a motion to approve all?
You got a question up here?
So you're suggesting that any of these we would like to have?
Can't, can't hear you. Can you talk into the mic?
You can't hear you.
Can't hear it?
You're not on.
I need.
Any of these ordinances that I think the public ought to have a chance to think about, I need to enumerate those now, is that what you're saying?
They'll get a first reading tonight, and if you, if you, because as you say, you want the public to have more of a chance to look at it, all we're saying is do not separate the ordinances, because they're a package, they relate to each other. So if you approve one tonight and you delay another one, it, it's problematic, because there are references back and forth between each parts of the code.
So if I have concerns about any of them, I need to vote no on the second reading?
On, on, on the first ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
So these are, so to clarify, these are housekeeping, the stuff we went over Monday, correct?
Say again, the last part?
These are housekeeping changes that we went over Monday during work session.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. So, council?
So we, we don't need a motion to, for me to read them the first time, they're automatic the first time, and then, and then we can do it. So would you like me to go ahead and read through them? There's a few, please. An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code AMC Chapter seven point eight four Public An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code AMC Title Eight by the creation of Chapter eight point zero one Public nuisances. An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code AMC Title Eight by the creation of Chapter eight point zero five Property Maintenance. An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code AMC Title Eight by the creation of Chapter eight point zero nine Portable Basketball Hoops. An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code AMC Title Eight by the creation of Chapter eight point one seven Derelict Structures. An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code AMC Title Eight by the creation of Chapter eight point two one Chronic nuisances, excuse me, Chronic nuisance property. An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code AMC Title Eight by the creation of Chapter eight point two five Specified Crime Property. An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code AMC Chapter eighteen point two eight Dangerous Buildings, Structures, and Premises. An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code AMC Title Eight by the creation of Chapter eight point two nine Hazardous Materials.
Question, sorry. You said eight point two eight?
Eight point two nine on that one.
Okay.
I don't see that on our.
Oh, I went out of order. Okay, my apologies. Do you want me to read this one again, just to clarify?
Yes, please read that one again, because I heard eight point two eight, and it was down at the bottom. Eighteen point two eight.
Oh.
You jumped right to the bottom.
Yeah, he just has them, there's a.
I'm not sure if I have that.
Number eleven was out of order.
So I read it, yeah, that was correct, it was just out of order, but I may have read, did I read eighteen point two eight?
You said eighteen point two eight.
Yeah, it's in numerical sequence, but it's not out of order.
Okay.
I have not, that's twenty-five. Okay, so we're good? Did I read this?
You haven't done number nine, eight to nine yet.
Okay. An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code AMC Title Eight by the creation of Chapter eight point two nine Hazardous Materials. An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code AMC Title Eight by the creation of Chapter eight point three three Boarding Up Structures. An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code AMC Title Eight by the creation of Chapter eight point three seven City Abatement.
I move we approve the reading of the ordinances in title, first time in title only.
We have a second?
He just did that.
He just did that?
Yeah.
So now we got to vote. So those, go ahead, then.
I'm going to vote no on the reading of the second time in title only. And I'd like to alert the public to, looking at the ordinance about property maintenance, number eight oh five, number eight oh nine, particularly portable basketball hoops. I think the, if you got kids and like the portable basketball hoops, you better take a look at that. Derelict structures, if you think your structure may be derelict, you may want to look at that ordinance. And also dangerous buildings, eighteen point two eight. So I'm voting no on reading in the second time in title only.
So I still have to get the vote, though, and you're going to vote no, so.
We need to make a motion.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I want to make sure I didn't get.
Well, you're. So, anybody make a motion to read the ordinance a second time in title only?
I will move to, to read all of them, ordinances a second time in title only.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no.
No.
Thank you. We'll bring that back next meeting, please, for automatic reading. Adoption of Resolutions, number seven on our agenda, it is going to be Financial Policies Update, Director Jaeger, page fifty-eight through sixty-four in your packet, resolutions on page fifty-nine, proposed resolution. Item B, Investment Policies, Director Jaeger, pages sixty-five through eighty in your packet, resolutions on page sixty-six. And Risk Management Policies, Director Jaeger, eighty-one through eighty-eight in your packet, resolutions on page eighty-two. She went over this on, Director Jaeger went over this on Monday. Does anyone have, would like to discuss this further? I think we had several questions and several minutes of discussion.
I would make a motion to adopt the resolutions on page fifty-nine, sixty-six, and eighty-two regarding city financial policies, investment policies, and risk management policies as presented.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Thank you very much, Director. I apologize to keep me here so late. Next is the Award of a Contract, number eight on the agenda, ST dash two-two dash one-one, Trying to Stop Improvements Phase One, Chris Sersnuski, Sersnuski?
Sercuski.
Sercuski, okay, thank you. Page eighty-nine through ninety-two in your packet.
All right, good evening. Staff is recommending that council award this contract in the amount of two hundred and six thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars to Pacific Excavation of Eugene. There were four bids submitted for this project ranging from the low bidder up to just under three hundred thousand, and the engineer's estimate was two hundred and fifty thousand. The project includes construction of twenty-eight new transit stops throughout Albany. The improvements at each location vary, but include new transit boarding areas, curb ramps, and striping. And these transit stops are part of the implementation of the new transit routes that have been discussed before, and this is the first phase. These are the stops that are required to actually implement the new stop, so we can't, you know, once these are done, then we'll be able to, to bring on new drivers and, and all, actually switch the bus routes over. There will be a second phase in the future to fill out these stops, but this first phase is the minimum needed to implement the, the new routes.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for Sercuski?
I move we approve the contract bid award to Pacific Excavation, Inc.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Thank you, motion passes.
Ready, thank you.
Next, number nine on the agenda is adoption of the consent calendar. Would the council like to make a motion?
Move to adopt the consent calendar as presented.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes, thank you. Okay, what's next?
Mr. Mayor?
Just a second.
For this part of the agenda, I need to recuse myself because.
I'm going to get to my agenda, hold on, I got to get back to page one.
Oh.
I got to make sure I'm in the right place, page one. Okay. Okay, number, item ten on the agenda is Staff Report, Senate Bill five-five-six-one, Funding Request, Anne Catlin, page one hundred and one oh three in your packet.
I need to recuse myself because I have two organizations that are part of this funding request.
Thank you. So did you catch that? Allison?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. So, Ms. Catlin, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and councilors. I am here on behalf of the Community Development Commission to, and I'll just hit the highlights of the memo in your packet, but they did meet again after your last meeting in September and discussed the merits of the applications, and lots of discussion at the September meeting and August meeting, and in the end, they recommend three applications receive funding, but they didn't provide a specific amount of funding. And those three applications, in no particular order, Habitat for Humanity, Creating Housing Coalition, and Dev Northwest. And I did provide a variety of options for you, but we would really appreciate it if you deliberated. I'm here to answer questions. Some members from each of the organizations are also here and provide direction to staff so that, on the award of these funds, so we can bring back something to you for a final decision or adoption.
Counsel, please, with Counsel Novak.
I just want to begin by saying thank you very much for taking the time to provide us with this information. Looking at the chart helps me enormously, and I, I appreciate the effort that went into it, and I, I, I'm just really grateful for what you did, because as I say, it really, it really helps the situation make more sense to me. I can see where people stand and, and where these organizations are, and so thank you.
Counsel Smith?
I had a question regarding Dev Northwest. As I recall their application, they asked for this amount and nothing less than that amount. They said they needed that amount in order to do the project that they have in mind.
That, that is what they said. I wasn't able to nail them down before the meeting, the primary person's out of town, but I think you, you just need to decide if you want to award funding to Dev Northwest, how much funding, and what I would offer to do is to go back to each of the applicants since, that you want to award funding to, and make sure that they can accept that funding, and then we can come back and, and make a recommendation. But it is the only application that cannot move forward without a substantial amount of funding.
Yeah, I'll, I'll reiterate what Counselor Smith mentioned, and that was my primary objection the first time around, and I, they, they were very forthright and freely admitted that that was all or nothing, and that almost to me sounded like an ultimatum, good, bad, or ugly, and I can see getting more money into Jackson Street or something like that, funding the others, as opposed to this all or nothing. The other folks seemed more amenable to be working with us, and I just didn't like the fact of a gun put to our head and said we want it all or nothing.
All right, I am on the diametrically opposed side of this issue with regard to Dev Northwest. I didn't feel like they were putting a gun to my head at all. I appreciated their honesty, I appreciate the fact that they would create forty homes that would be forever than that, whether the, these are, I, I really, I, I appreciate what they can do, and I realize that that's an enormous chunk of change in terms of the one million dollars, but my perspective is, based on what they're providing for that, I would just as soon happily give them seven hundred and fifty thousand of it and have the other two entities that you've narrowed it down to share the rest, because they can move forward, and I have a lot of respect for, for both the tiny home creation and Habitat, but they can move forward, and they have a ton of support. And again, I didn't feel like anybody was putting a gun to my head. They're saying, here's what we can do, but here's what we need in order to do it. Forty homes that'll be there forever that are homeownership, to me, that's huge. And I, I also want to stand on the fact that Dev Northwest has a longstanding relationship in this county, and they've done a lot of good for a lot of people, so they, they just have a support, I really support them. I think they, they merit this, I do, with what they would give.
Any other councillors would like to make more comments? Counselor Smith?
The only comment I would have is that I'm prepared to make a motion to grant the requests as, as suggested by this Community Development Commission for Habitat and for Creating Housing. That's six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars total. That leaves a balance that can be allocated at another time to another project, but I feel strongly about those two projects and helping them move forward. The money's there, let's do it.
Well, and I would say, I feel really strongly about moving forward with Dev Northwest and having the other two entities share the remainder. I know it's not a huge sum, but they, they can move forward, and Dev Northwest cannot, and we're looking at forty homes. To me, I, I would, I would move forward with Dev Northwest and the other two entities sharing the balance.
I, I did, can I ask, as Mayor, can I ask a question? Okay, so this is the, I had a question, just the one about the Habitat two homes. Is there a timeline in which these projects, this money has to be spent or allocated or spent?
No, we report to the state until the money is completely spent. I think there is some urgency in making a decision so that agencies can move on, but it will take time. These are, well, certain projects are, are very large projects, some projects are at different, they're at different stages, but, you know, the applicants try to provide their best guess at a timeline, and, you know, COVID, construction industry, I mean, you know, they're doing their best at estimating those timelines.
Go ahead and make your motion.
I, I made a motion, there's.
We have a motion, and do we have a second?
Second.
No, as amended by Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Can you please state that?
I'm lost.
So your, what was your motion?
My motion was to grant the funding as recommended by the Community Development Commission to Creating Housing and Habitat for a total of six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars now, leaving a balance to be allocated later to other projects.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, there's a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no?
No.
Motion passes. No, it doesn't, it's like three to one.
We don't have, we don't have a court.
So we're going to have to bring that back. So we're going to have to bring this back, correct, Sean?
Yeah, we'll have to bring it back, then we're bringing that for.
Counselors.
For councillors or for people make a motion.
Four councillors or four people make a motion, so.
Right. Okay, thank you. We'll bring that back at the next meeting. Thank you, Anne, for your time today. I do recommend, or I do request that you ask Dev Northwest if they can take a lower amount. I appreciate that. Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is business from the council. Now, first of all, that was a difficult discussion. You guys have no idea, so thank you for all of your input. Business from the council. And let's start over here. Where's Stacy? There she is. Counsel Bartholomew, we're starting with you.
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Counsel Smith?
I wanted to publicly thank, this is a very small thing, but it was a big thing for me, publicly thank the street sweeper operator who was working in Deerfield this morning. Our paths crossed twice on the, in the course of my morning walking with my young, very hyperactive dog, and he stopped. Stopped the brushes, stopped everything but the engine of the street sweeper twice as we passed by, so that my dog was not frightened. And I really am grateful for that. So, publicly thank, please pass that along. Director Bailey. And also, I, just a little moment in time, where were you 60 years ago today?
Not asking me.
Well, I know, yeah. Sorry. Well, this is the 60th anniversary of the Columbus Day Storm. Yes. And for people who were in Albany at the time, you may remember. I was not. I was in Harrisburg watching trees blow down all around the house where I grew up. But we have a scrapbook in the city manager's office with a whole bunch of black and white snapshots from that time, taken by city employees as they went around all over the old parts of Albany where all the big trees were, and took photos of everyone that was on a car, on a sidewalk, on a street, on a lawn, on a building. There were lots of them. And I, it was a kind of a walk down memory lane for me when I reviewed that scrapbook a few years ago. But 60 years ago today, I can't believe all that time has passed. And the trees grew back.
Counsel, thank you, Matt Counselor. Counsel Hopsensky?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Counsel Novak?
I have a thank you as well, although I do not see Chief Harndon. I had made a request on behalf of a constituent for some statistics regarding crime in North Albany, and she was able to provide some information, and I want to say thank you. So, thank you, Chief Harndon, wherever you are.
Thank you. Only a couple of things from me tonight. I had a request from a constituent regarding the Waverly Lake. They're asking about, what are we doing as a city to clean that up? And so, I was going to pass it on to either, is it Parks and Rec or Director Bailey?
It is Parks and Rec, and she has addressed that before. And, you know, without a running water through there when the weather gets warm, I assume this constituent is talking about algae.
Correct.
So, it grows. So, they've made an attempt to try to pull that algae out of there this summer with a boat, and that proved to be problematic in many ways. There is one thing that they will try next year in order to perhaps aerate it a little bit. But it's, unfortunately, with, that is not a, you know, rapidly flowing body of water, so when the summertime comes and the temperatures get warm, algae does grow.
Okay. And the second thing is, I received a very, very kind call from a constituent, and I won't say her name publicly, but she gave great praise to the Albany Police Department for the way they handled her son that was going through a crisis, a mental health crisis. And she couldn't talk highly enough about the way the officers handled it and how they treated her and her son and her family during that event. And I wanted to, I'll give the details to Chief Harndon, but she was really happy with the work that they had done with her son and how they felt safe, and she felt safe, as they were handling her son. So, I will let them know that and publicly state that we get a lot of good feedback about our police department. And I think for me, more so good than bad. And, and the stuff that they do get me that has a negative slant to it, they fix it right away. And so, Chief Harndon's Police Department is doing a great job. And there's one more thing, I'm sorry. There's a, there's two gentlemen called The Long Road. They're walking from Boston to Newport, Oregon on Highway 20. And so, they reached out to Dean Sawyer, the mayor of Newport, and he passed it to me, and I've notified all the mayors on Highway 20 that are in Oregon, emailed them directly to contact for them. They should be here in late November. They're going to be walking through town, and so I am excited. So, once we have a mayor in Lebanon, I'll let them know. But we are pretty excited about having them come through town. And they're veterans, and they're raising money for veterans. And that's all I have. City manager report, please.
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks for the good news about the police department. You, councillors will have received a couple of emails from our city attorney, Sean Kidd, about litigation that's been filed regarding the Jefferson Avenue vacation right away. So, just a caution to not talk to the litigant. It's under litigation now, so we need to be cautious about what we, what we, how we handle that. And the only other thing was to let you know that I think you already know that tomorrow at 2 o'clock, there's a ribbon cutting at Burkhardt Park for the new fitness equipment there. So, I will be there, and I hope some of you can make it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So, next meeting dates are October 24th, Monday at 4:00 p.m. for a work session, and Wednesday, October 26th, for a, at 6:00 p.m. for our normal city council meeting. And with that, I will adjourn tonight's meeting. Thank you very much.